I'm Lisa Scroggins, I'm the Director of the Nitrana County Library and we are so excited to be able to partner with the League of Women Voters and bring you three different candidate forums prior to our elections. Obviously tonight is the City Council forum for the candidates who are running for city council positions and then the next two Wednesdays we'll be having additional candidate forums. I believe the next one is the County Commission, followed by the next week would be the Nitrana County School Board. So, thank you so much for coming. I would like to just welcome you, sorry, introduce to you, Michael Stadili. Michael is going to be the moderator tonight. He's a retired teacher from Kelly Wash High School. He taught theater, language arts, speech and debate for over forty years, so I turn it now over to his capable hands. Thank you again.
Thank you. And welcome to this opportunity to participate in representational democracy in action. We're glad to see you, we're certainly glad to see all of the candidates. I'll give you a little rundown of how it's going to work. This isn't going to be anything like you might have seen at Senate Judiciary Committee meetings, or the example I used two years ago, we talked about the debates between Hillary Clinton and the gentleman who is now President Trump, nothing like that. This will be the epitome of civility. Okay. Um, thank you. That was very, theater people love that. Okay. For those of you who would like to take a more active part, you may have seen that right outside those doors, there's a table, there are little note cards, there are pens. If you have a question that you would like the candidates to address, you can write it down there. We may or may not be able to get to it. In most cases, a question that comes from the audience is actually one of the questions that have already come to us from other sources anyway, so if yours gets asked, terrific. If it doesn't, don't worry too much about it, maybe somebody else already slipped it in there. So, the way we will run this is incredibly simple. Raise your hand if you like simple. Good, very good. In the very beginning, each of you will get two minutes to introduce yourselves. Tell us who you are, why you're running, what are your goals, how you would hope to accomplish those goals. That's the one that most people seem to leave out. Everybody can say, "These are my goals." It's nice to have a goal, but a goal without a plan is only a wish. So, if you can say how you might be able to do that, that would be terrific too, but you only get two minutes for that introduction. And then, when we go through the questions, ah, take a deep breath, one minute. Now, in case you're wondering how to time that, Dan here has this wonderful paddle. When you see, no, it's, no. However tempting it might be, when you see the black, half your time is gone. When you see the red, kindly finish the sentence you have already started. Resist the impulse to, "Oh, but I have a follow-up." Just skip that, just finish what you're doing and then we'll move on to the next ones. But remember, for your introduction, you get two minutes, so when you see that black side of the paddle, you still have a whole minute. And so, let us start with what we call stage right, or house left, and we'll just go all the way around. Oh, can you hear me? I'm not using a microphone, but you can hear me alright? How about in the back, can you hear me? Very well.
There, there might be some issue with whether you're coming over the TV or not.
Ah. Mike, Michael, if you want to grab that, oh, there's a microphone right there. I just pushed the button?
It's already on.
Very good. Thank you.
My name is Stephen Freel and I am running in Ward Three. Resident of Casper all my life, so almost fifty-one years now. Married with three kids. My background is twenty-six years in law enforcement here in Casper. I retired in May of 2016 as the Assistant Chief of the Police Department. I got out of law enforcement to pursue the happier part of my life and so I got into real estate and that's what I do for a living now, is I sell real estate. What I feel like I bring to the table is working in the upper command of the Police Department. I understand how the city works. I've done RFPs. Part of my job as a lieutenant with the Police Department was overseeing the Metro Animal Control when, I ran that for a period of time. The 911 dispatch center, I was responsible for the build-out of that center too, where it is now in the nerd building on the east side of town. I was in charge of that entire project. So I understand what it takes to get projects done within the city, I understand the, the red tape that it takes to get through and get some of these projects done. Goals that I have are, any issue, I think that we need to listen to all sides of the issue and obtain all the information we possibly can before we make a decision. I think that's part of the problem that, that we've had in the past, is that we like to talk, but we don't like to listen. And so, truly I believe that by sitting back, listening, and, and to what people have to say on all sides of it, and then to follow up with that and find all the possible information we can before we make a decision as to our, our final outcome, that's very important.
Thank you, Mr. Freel. Ms. Kidd?
My name is Amy Kidd. I am running in Ward One. I'm honored to be here. I was a write-in candidate in the primaries and truly it's an honor to be here. First and foremost, I'm a mother. I'm an advocate. I'm a business owner. I'm a friend. I'm running because I'm relatable. I'm not going to sit here and talk about all the experience I have. Steve's is impressive. I am, you took the words out of my mouth. My, I don't have an agenda. My goal here is to be a neighbor and be a friend and I've stood at that podium many, many times and I've been intimidated. No one should be intimidated, because the people who sit on this council work for the citizens. It is imperative that every person that comes to the city council with a concern is met with empathy and understanding and that solutions are brought to that concern with diligence and dignity. And that's what I hope to accomplish and like Steve said, the best way to accomplish that is by listening. So, thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Anderson?
Good evening, my name is Jackie Anderson. I'm running for Ward One, Casper City Council. I'm a third-generation Casper native. Just found this hat, my grandfather's hat. My dad was Andy Anderson. He served for the Casper Fire Department for almost thirty years and worked for Tru Drilling after that. My mom served as a nurse for Wyoming Medical Center for almost forty-five years. So I had parents that served the community and I learned a lot by watching their example. I'm a Casper small business owner. I own a little bistro downtown called Jackie's Bistro. We're going on five years, in profit, squeaking by, but still in profit. I have a saying in Casper, you, if you can do it here, you can do it anywhere, usually have everything going against you. You have the economy, you have the population, you have the weather, you have the politics. But if you make it, you can, you can succeed in anything and I think Casper has a huge entrepreneurial spirit, especially during the downtimes. It seems that we have the ability to come together as a community and help each other and support each other. What I feel like I bring to the table is, I've been a city council member before. I ran in 2000 and served from 2001 to 2004 and that year we elected five women and so for the first time ever in history, we actually had six women on council. This obviously is going to be a different scenario, but we did accomplish a lot. There were a lot of battles that we fought and I believe that this council has a lot of battles that they need to fight. I think that there needs to be a little bit more transparency, there shouldn't be some intimidation. And because I'm used to being on council, it was easier for me to, it's easier for me. So I want it to be easier for everyone out there to be able to come to us, or to come to council, or to call the city and be able to talk to somebody and try to resolve a problem that you may or may not, you may have in the community.
Thank you very much.
My name is Kristen Lutz, I'm running for the four-year chairman, Ward One. Born in Wyoming, raised in Wyoming, educated in Wyoming, been here my whole life. My degree's in accounting and finance, my background's in public accounting, tax preparation, nonprofit audits, and currently I serve as the Vice President for Pathfinder Federal Credit Union. I'm married with two kids, that's my background, and so what I would hope to accomplish as a city council, and this is obviously my first time running for public office, I've really followed Jesse Morgan closely, who currently holds this seat, and I love the way that he invites people to come and have coffee with him. He runs a Facebook page and he's very good about posting on there to keep people informed as to what's happening. And so, I would like to really continue his goal of not only transparency, but also including people, so that they feel like they're just as much in this seat as I am.
Thank you. Mr. Pacheco?
Good evening. My name is Ray Pacheco. I'm currently on city council, running for reelection for the Ward Three seat. I'm currently serving as Mayor of Casper, which is quickly coming to an end here and it's been an extreme joy and probably one of the greatest and hardest challenges I've had is serving as Mayor for Casper. A couple things about me, born and raised here in Casper. I work at Casper College where I am the Gear Up Director, which we help kids get into college and we help them transition into college. I have a Master's in Social Work and youth are my passion, which I'll talk about in a couple seconds. My family is here, they are steadfast behind me in all the things that I have done, my four kids, my beautiful wife and my sister-in-law, who have always, every other Tuesdays they're watching the city council meetings for me, so, thank you. I think what, one of the things that I was talking the other day is that I had, felt like I'm just getting the hang of council now. After almost four years, I finally have started to figure it out. It is something that I took for granted when I first got onto council. I think we need to continue and have that experience on council with new ideas. We need to focus in on our budget as our economy still continues to come out of the, the depths. We need to focus in on our infrastructure, our agent infrastructure, and so we need to be fiscally responsible, fiscally conservative on that, and we should not be bash, shy about making sure we do that and supporting our community in that direction. That is my hope and then finally, my hope to be, this next four years, will continue to be an advocate and a major supporter of our young people in our community. Thank you and it's an honor to be here tonight.
My name is Ken Bates. I'm going for Ward Two for the two years. Bill Knight is my opponent, I was hoping that he was going to be here so I could meet him, because I haven't got to meet him yet. I'm not a politician, never cared to be a politician, but with the last few years of seeing kind of some of the stuff that the city council has gone through, some raised red flags to me, some I said, "Man, they've been doing a great job." So, I've been born and raised here, but I've been born and raised out towards bar and none. I'm a person from, I guess, the country. I'm a country boy. So, education, other than graduating high school, that's all I have, but I have a passion for Casper. As Mr. Pacheco, I have a passion for the younger group here, but I have a real passion about our issues with alcohol abuse and I hope to touch on that. And then, government stepping into our privilege and our rights and honestly, I won't allow it to happen. There's a point that I understand government needs to be there, but we need our, to protect our freedom as much as possible. How I'm going to go about that is hopefully with the other eight councilmen, I do hope these ladies get in, I'd love to work with you. I think we need some ladies on the council to get their intuition. So, that's what I can say about me.
Thank you.
Thank you, I'm Mike Huber. It's, it was my privilege to be appointed to fill in when there came a vacancy here in Ward One. I'm now running for the, the rest of the two-year unexpired term. Amy Kidd is my opponent. We met here tonight for the first time, I believe. I'm what you might call a third-generation Casper person. My grandparents came here in about 1920. My parents have lived here always, I've lived here always, actually in the center part of town, in Ward One, my whole life. We've had a variety of different business interests in Casper. I know what it means when things go up and down and how tough it is to do business here in Casper. We've, we've seen our way through that over the years. I served for four years as a prosecuting attorney, worked a lot with the city of Casper, the Police Department in that capacity. I also served for thirty-two years as a Circuit Court Judge here and served as the first drug court judge for Nitrana County and was real proud to, to do that and considered that to be a privilege. The thing is that public service is not about slogans, it's not about social Facebook postings or anything like that. It's about how you live your life, it's about, it's a way of life. My entire career, my entire adult life has been devoted to public service. Through my work as a judge, through my volunteer work as a fire chief up on Casper Mountain with the Casper Mountain Volunteer Fire Department, all of those things. Public service is a way of life for me, not just a slogan, not just a Facebook posting. The, you know, the city faces a lot of challenges and how I'm going to work, how we're going to have to achieve and answer those challenges, it's not easy. It's hard work and that's what I'm willing to sign up for, is to work hard on these issues. And that's what I pledge if, if I have the privilege to continue to serve as a councilman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Huber. Mr. Owen?
Good evening, my name's Pete Owen, I'm running for Ward Three. Thank you to the Nitrana County Library and the League of Women Voters for hosting this great forum. Our current city council is represented by an attorney, a judge, two career law enforcement officers, healthcare, education, but I strongly believe we need a voice for business and a business owner on the council. I currently own two businesses with a partner and another business by myself and all three are profitable and that forces us to make sound fiscal decisions, create jobs and grow revenues. I think those foundations are critical for a city council member. We're running large budgets and many employees and so it's good to have that business background. City council members are stewards of the citizens' money and I take that responsibility, I don't take that responsibility lightly. Publicly, as far as I've heard, I'm the only candidate talking about growing the Casper economy as opposed to cutting budgets. If elected, I'll use my business background to manage your money efficiently, eliminate wasteful spending and grow the economy. I'm looking forward to some great questions this evening and thank you for having us all here, I think this is a great idea.
Thank you, Mr. Owen. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you and thanks again for putting this on. I think it's always great ways for the constituents to hear what the candidates have to say. My name is Sean Johnson and I've had the privilege of serving Ward Two for the last four years and I'm seeking reelection. I currently serve the Nitrana County Sheriff's Office as a Deputy Sheriff for the past eleven years. I'm a member of the Wyoming Army National Guard where I've served as a combat medic for eighteen years with one deployment in Iraq and I currently am a three-quarter time student at the University of Wyoming where I studied business. I think I've been a voice of fiscal conservatism and liberty with minimal regulation and yet responsible regulation and I want to continue that work. I think there's still work that, that has to be had yet. I want to continue to work on the budget, though it's gotten better and we have had some challenges throughout the last four years, given the econ, the economic situation. I think we can do better. I want to see the reserves balance higher than it is. I'd also like to see us work a little bit harder on our infrastructure, what was one of the things that I ran on in 2014 and it's always an area of improvement. So I look forward to the questions tonight and getting to know each one of the candidates myself, so thank you.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for being here and as idealistic as it may sound, thank you for your courage. I think it takes a great deal of courage, dedication and love of community to run for public office. So, thank you very, very much for being here and putting yourself out there for everybody to, to see and letting us know what it is that, that you would like to do for the city of Casper. I sometimes think, and this is a personal note, that people who run for office don't get nearly the amount of thank-yous that they, that they should get. They don't get the appreciation that should come their way. So while I can't speak for everyone here, thank you very, very much for running and for being here. Now to give you an idea of the questions, there's a wide variety of questions and many of the subjects have been touched on by some of you as well. You may see some of those subjects come up as we ask the questions. Remember, you'll only get one minute, oh, should I be closer to this? Thank you very much. You only get one minute, which goes by very, 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 very quickly. So, the way we'll do this is, since Mr. Freel started with the introductions, we'll start with you and we'll go around and then come back to you. And then for the second question, Ms. Anderson, we'll start with you and that's the way we'll go around. And from time to time, I may get a question from the audience and we'll see how it goes. Anyone, do any of you have a question before we begin? Very well. Ms. Kidd, you get first crack at, describe your perspective on the job of a city council member.
Awesome. I touched on it. If I'm elected to be a city council member for my ward, it's to be a neighbor, it's to be a representative of my neighbor's interests, my community's interests, their concerns, their wants and needs, the problems that they see and to address them, like I said, diligently and quickly. Am I done? I'm only halfway?
Yeah.
I get wordy. I'm a single mom with six kids, so you want to talk about a budget? People have concerns about money right now. Give a budget to a single mom with six kids and every penny will be accounted for, I promise you that. Listening, I want to listen to my neighbors, I want to understand their concerns and like I said, I don't think anyone should be intimidated to approach the council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could you repeat the question?
Absolutely, I was just about to ask you if you needed that. Describe your perspective on the job of a city council member.
Perspective on the job, when I was serving on the council, it was the same things, it was for more transparency, it was for people to have the ability to be part of the change. I always say, "One vote makes a difference, one voice makes a difference" and when you get more than one and you get three and then you get five and then you get seven, a lot of things can happen and I experienced that during the first time of my council. We would have barbecues and get everybody on board with the downtown merchants groups and the DDA and we pushed forward and had council on our side and got some things followed through. So, I, I think it's really important that people feel that they can access us a little bit more, that they're not afraid to approach us and talk to us and we're not afraid to fight for them as well, so.
Thank you.
Perspective on the job of a council, councilman, councilwoman. As you mentioned, it's a public service position and so, on that same thread, current city council does a, as far as I can tell, a good job at this, but just continue to make sure that the public is feeling served by our service. Make sure that they feel like we're representing the issues that they want brought forward, make sure that we're resolving the issues that they're bringing forward and we're laying that information back to them in a timely manner. If we all want to be part of this community and we want to spend our lives here, we need to make it great. We're just the voices for the people, it's not for our agendas to be pushed.
Thank you.
That's a big question. As being a part of city council the last four years, it's a multitude of things, things that you did not expect that you would be doing. The various boards, the various committees that you would sit on, the meetings, the times that you would spend talking to people, the phone calls, the times you would go to somebody's house because they had an issue at their house or struggle, struggle with the street issue. There are multiple things that we do. We have a fiduciary responsibility to represent the city of Casper, first and foremost, and we do that with the responsibility of making sure that we have a balanced budget. But beyond that, and more incredibly important and vital, is the representation of what we do for this community and being a voice for the voiceless, but also making sure that we create an opportunity to have open doors for people to express how they feel and that they are represented to our fullest, fullest work that we can do for them.
They pretty much said most of everything that I think I would say. The people come first. The P, you, the city council works for every individual person that is in the city of Casper, but also in Nitrana County and beyond. When they come in and if somebody in Nitrana County's coming into Casper has a complaint, they have every right to stand up at that podium and tell us what's going on and it is our job, or the city council's job, to hear them, listen to them, because there's a difference between the two, but then to respond in a timely manner and not just, "Well, we'll get to you." No, it is, "We will tell you what's going on."
Thank you. My perspective on the, the job of being a councilman, councilperson, first of all is to listen to and represent the people. My years of experience as a judge, and I'm now a retired judge and that's an important distinction because, you know, judges can't run for office or things like that. I am a retired judge, but the experience that I came away from that with is that the best way to get the best result in any kind of a situation is to listen and to wait until you have all of the facts in front of you and listen to both sides very clearly and then make a decision. I can't tell you how many times at the start of a case, you think, "Oh, the outcome is just obvious" and then you listen to both sides. Well, it's maybe not quite as obvious as you thought. And I think that's a real important perspective and an important job skill that I bring to this, that other folks might not have. They might not have that lifetime experience of listening to both sides and then making decisions. Thank you.
Mr. Owen?
I think it's really important for members to be visible and available to the community. I'm running to represent the east side of Casper, but once elected, you represent the entire community and it's very important to listen to citizens and be out there talking with them publicly, create some venues where they feel they can meet with you for coffee and just voice their opinions. I think the priorities need to be public safety, infrastructure and services and creating an environment that attracts and retains businesses. I really think we need to focus on growing the economy here in Casper and I really think we need to focus on growing the economy here in Casper and our aging infrastructure really needs attention. So those would be my focuses. I would hope that those are priorities of the council moving forward. And I've seen some budget items that indicate that that is a priority. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
From my perspective, a city councilperson is a representative of the people. I don't work for the city. I work for you and I help to make the city work for you. A city councilman is also a steward of the people's money and property. And they are also team players. You're one of nine up here, so if you want to see anything get done, you have to be a team player. A lot of people come into here thinking, I'm going to save the world when I get elected to office. And you get in and you find out that you're one-ninth of the vote on this council and that you have to be a team player. But you can do that without giving up your personal beliefs and the beliefs that you hold to yourself. But first and foremost, a councilman is a representative of the people and to make sure that the people are well represented on the city council.
Thank you. Mr. Freel, you've had all of that time to repair your response, so there you go. On the next question, you'll have all of that time, Ms. Kidd.
Well, my answer to that question is the fact that, again, you're the voice of the people, you represent the people as a whole. I think that, again, you need to listen more and talk less is how it needs to happen. My entire career, not this one now, but my past one, there's two sides to every story and that's the only way to resolve it is by getting to the bottom of each of the issues and looking at both sides. And if there's something on the outside or the outskirts of that that would help make that decision, then you've got to look at that and bring it into play. I also feel that as a member of the council, you need to be engaged in the community. There's plenty of issues that come in front of council members all the time that instead of taking people's word for it, we can go out and actually visit some of these issues that are taking place, whether it be the placement of signs was a recent one in a recent council meeting around a school where there was no school signs. And by simply going out and taking a look at how that signage was set up around that school would help in making a decision later down the line.
Thank you. Ms. Anderson, you get the first crack at this one. The city council really has two employees, the city manager and the city attorney. How will you provide review and oversight for those two employees?
Oversight?
That's what it says, yeah.
First of all, I do applaud the city manager or the city council for hiring our current city manager, Carter.
Can you speak up?
I'm sorry. Anyway, I said that I was congratulating council for hiring Carter Napier. I worked with him when I was on council, when he was assistant city manager. Communication is the key to everything that we try to do here. And I firmly believe that I do, I communicate with Carter on a regular basis, so I don't feel that there is a problem with that. Carter is a very easy person to talk to. And when it comes to the city manager, isn't Carter supposed to be his boss? Is that correct?
City attorney?
City, I mean, city attorney.
Mm-mm.
No, it's council.
I guess I'm done with that question, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
It's kind of a confusing question.
Mm-hmm.
It really is, so.
I agree that it's a confusing question, so I'll probably keep this a little short so I don't stumble over myself, the city attorney as well.
Thank you.
Could you repeat that, just really quick? Just want to make sure I've got it right. To see in the coming year from your employees. Second, and probably more importantly, is that we'd have to have conversations throughout the year where you're meeting not only sometimes in executive sessions, which are critical, but you also need to have conversations outside of that, being able to call at any time. And I will say Carter and John are wonderful at that and return phone calls quickly. They're great at texting, great at all those things, and emails. So it's critical that you do those things and have that conversation, that open communication with your staff. But yearly review of your staff for your goal set is critical for the function of the city.
Thank you.
I will keep it short as well. I believe it is definitely communication, as Mayor said. But then the other aspect is trust. Trusting them in what they know and their knowledge. And when they bring something to the council, to trust that they know what they're doing. That's why they're hired. City council hired them. And so to doubt them or question them too much, or their team that they have behind them, I think it's communication and it's trust.
Thank you.
Actually, I believe there are three people that work directly for the council, the manager, the city attorney, and the municipal court judge. But what's critical is that the function of the council is to establish a budget and to establish broad policy guidelines and to work with the city manager to implement those broad policies. It's very important to listen to and consult with everybody that works for you, and that's a two-way street. It's two-way communication. You ask the city manager, well, what do you and your staff think about this? And then you listen to that, you take that into account, and you might or might not follow exactly what they suggest. The fact that you might not follow them does not mean that you ignored them. It does not mean that there's any disrespect or confusion between the council and the manager or any of these other people. What it means is that the council is making a separate, independent judgment after it's heard all of the facts, after it's heard everything from all the affected parties. And that's what I think the function of the council is.
Thank you. And thank you for that correction.
I think there needs to be an annual review, but I also believe that evaluations should never be a surprise. So throughout the year, you must have regular meetings with your attorney, your municipal court judge, and your city manager to make sure that you're all on the same page, moving towards the same goals and the vision that you've set for the city. The city manager does a lot of background work for the council and prepares and gathers a lot of information for the council ahead of meetings. And so that role is vital so that they are informed and can move forward with a vision for the city. I think John Henley and Carter Napier have hit the ground running and are doing a fabulous job so far from the citizen's perspective, and I'd love to see what it's like from the council's perspective.
Thank you.
We just did this, actually. Annual reviews are extremely important. This is one of the things I ran on in 2014 as well. You have to set measurable goals and then you have to hold your employees to those goals. I think Carter and our city attorney do a very great job. They are our subject matter experts. They advise us, but yet ultimately, the decision is ours. Again, you need to make sure that the lines of communication are open both ways. You can't be afraid to tell your employees what you want to see done and they can't be afraid to give you advice otherwise if they feel that way. But as Mike says, just because we don't take the advice of the employee does not mean that we ignore them or we just simply have a difference of opinion. We're the policymakers, they're the ones behind the scenes that steer the ship for us.
Thank you.
Again, annual, biannual reviews obviously need to take place. That way they know where they sit at any given time. But you need to have an open dialogue and communication with your employees. And if it comes down to something that you question, you need to make sure that you ask that question. I don't think you can push too many questions to somebody. You've got to do the right thing and ask the questions and get to the bottom of the issue at hand. And get some supporting documentation that you need if it comes down to that, but just make sure that your questions are answered.
From what I've seen since Carter stepped onto the scene, the dynamic with the council has been nothing short of flawless. The city manager works at the discretion of the council. I'm going to stumble over my words here. Anytime I have met with Carter, he has been extremely approachable, understanding, and extremely diligent in trying to come up with solutions to those problems. I haven't had the pleasure to meet Mr. Henley yet. That office has a huge task with limited resources at hand. So I think the communication between the council and the manager and the attorney and the municipal judge is extremely important as far as, you know, manageable and obtainable goals.
Thank you. And we started with you on that one, didn't we? All right.
Yes, you did.
Very good. Now you'll find that this one is kind of related to that question. The city staff is directly accountable to the city manager, not the council. What kind of interaction would you expect to have with city staff?
Turned out to be like a trap. So, direct interactions with city staff to some degree, I mean, Carter is the bridge between there. So obviously, I would never seek to have a direct interaction with city staff without going to Carter or at least acknowledging with Carter beforehand. I mean, I would imagine the only appropriate time to even be discussing matters with the city staff outside of Carter being involved or knowing of the meeting would be if the staff were needing to raise concerns regarding Carter. Otherwise, I would say, I would always defer to Carter or make sure he was aware of the meeting or at least part of the meeting.
So, in city council, there are times that you certainly do have conversations with the department heads and other city employees. Where that boundary should lie is that we trust the city manager, Carter, to oversee the oversight of and the administration of the city employees. That's a critical aspect of it. At no time should a city council member ever give direction to a department head or any city employee to do anything. That really should come down to the city manager. There are times where you are approached by some city employees where you do have conversations with that. The next step for that would be to then go to our city manager and have that conversation so that the appropriate lines are done that way. And so it's really critical that we really put that trust in our city manager, especially Carter, to make sure he is handling the situations that come. And then you have executive sessions where there are personnel issues that you can deal with in a timely manner.
Thank you.
City employees are residents and they should feel welcome to talk to the council. Not about work, not about issues that they may or may not have, but they should have a right to come and talk to the city council when they need to. Anything work-related does go through the city manager and there needs to be a clarifying line regarding that. But as far as them talking to city council, I don't think that there should be any major issues with that.
You have to keep in mind what the function of the council is. And I think the function of the council is to provide broad guidance to everybody that works for the city. My vision of that is that the council should provide the broad guidance to all city employees that they work for the people. They're there to help the people. In terms of specific kind of things beyond that broad kind of guidance, obviously you have to work through the city manager. There are a great many times when city staff is extremely valuable in bringing information to the council and forming, you know, they're expert. We've got some really good people that work for the city of Casper. They're experts in their field. And we would be foolish if we didn't listen to them. We would be foolish if we didn't take advantage of the knowledge that they have on a great many of these issues. And so in that sense, using them as a resource, that's a really important resource to keep in mind and to work with. But obviously, you have to work through the city manager because they all work for him.
Thank you.
I agree with Mike. I think that there's a lot of experts in their fields. We have engineers, we have great employees in this city, and the council needs to be approachable so that they, they're the ones on the front line. So if we're dealing with an issue as simple as signage, the people that are in charge of signage should be at the table and convening with us. They are first and foremost citizens of Casper, and so we need to be available to them as their council members. I don't think there should be an employer-employee relationship. I think we need to keep that as a citizen-council relationship or to use their knowledge and background.
I think it's all been said here. Again, Carter is our vessel that implements the broad policy that we give him. Our interaction with city employees are minimal and on an as-needed basis in our functions as councilmen, Carter will call upon subject matter experts in their field to help the city, guide the city council in their decisions. But as far as giving direction, the city council is not in charge of the city employees. It's only in charge of the city manager, the city attorney, and the judge. So again, as far as guidance goes, it all goes through Carter.
You're going to have interaction with city employees and you'd be crazy not to have interaction with them. But at the same time, it goes back once again to the city manager. It's chain of command is basically what it is. He's the one that we entrust to take care of the issues that come up and it needs to go through him. But vice versa, if you have a city employee that comes up that has some sort of an issue and approaches you with that issue, then you need to go to the city manager, inform him of what that issue is and let him handle it properly, not take any steps yourself.
You talked earlier about council being public service, and I don't think the city employees of this town get thanked enough for the hours that they do and the work that they provide to our city. Anytime I've had an interaction with city employees, especially in city hall, nothing but intelligent, approachable people that are happy to help and happy to serve. And so I just want to thank our city employees that I don't think get thanked enough. Everything's, I think that can be said, has been said. You know, there's policies and procedures that need to be followed as far as personnel issues and they would go through Carter. We have the resource of the city attorney's office, so a wealth of resources and a wealth of knowledge. And I would just, you know, again, like to thank our city employees and let them know I would continue to call on them.
Thank you.
I'm ending that question.
Yes. If you want to.
Can you repeat the question?
Certainly. The city staff, as has been said repeatedly, is directly accountable to the city manager, not the council. What kind of interaction would you, as a city council member, expect to have with city staff?
Pretty much everybody said, I can do that now. Everything that I would say. The job of the city manager is to oversee our city employees. It's not to say that if there are some concerns and stuff like that, that they can't come to us. But the general rule of protocol is to go to the city manager with dealing with city staff. So, as I said, everybody pretty much said the same thing and I agree with 100% of that.
You may have to help me out with this question a little bit, those of you with the experience.
So how did I end up with this question, then?
Say it again?
Go ahead, Michael.
The city maintained a reserve of 50% of annual operating expenses for many years. Is that correct?
Correct.
In the recent past, councils approved city management's request to reduce the reserve percentage in order to balance the budget.
Okay.
The city is currently working toward rebuilding general fund reserves with a goal of setting aside 120 days of operating expenses. Do you support... of setting aside 120 days of operating expenses. Do you support the idea of a general fund reserve account? The follow-up question to that is, what percentage would you feel is appropriate? Again, do you support the idea of a general fund reserve account, and what percentage would you feel is appropriate?
So, first, let me just, let me just answer. I do support having a general reserve account. And I think that it, our municipality, especially for this last, the last couple of years, has not been as strong as it could have been, but only because we've had to, we had a weaker economy. But it's critical, I think, municipality our size, that we do have a general reserve. And with that being said, I think our municipality has had one of the strongest reserves in the state, if I'm not mistaken. And we still continue to do that. I, I don't know an exact number that I would like to see. And so, I, I'm not going to comment on an exact number, but I, but what I want to see is that we need to have a strong and robust reserve account. And what that number looks like, I don't know. You know, we're, we're kind of slowly climbing out of an economic downturn. And so, I'm not quite sure what the next couple of years will be like. But I definitely want to make sure that we do have a reserve.
Thank you. Mr. Bates?
This will be quick. I agree with the reserve, and we need to make sure that it's always there as far as a percentage. Not knowing where it's all at, I could not give an answer to that.
Thank you.
Obviously, we have to have an operating reserve. Everybody, you need to have a savings account to fall back on in this question. The question about what that percentage should be is, that's a tough question. Because what, you're not just talking about numbers there. You're talking about people. You're talking about service to people. You're talking about safety issues, public safety issues. There's been criticism of the Casper Police Department, for instance, in recent years, that, how they've handled various kinds of cases and things like that. Some of the problems, and I think that, that Mr. Friel might agree with me, some of those problems have come about because of the ups and downs of the, the income cycles and the problems of having, well, we're not going to hire any new officers, and so you don't have any, you know, you don't have a steady stream of experienced people there. And then you end up being short-staffed. You end up with a situation like what the police department's facing right now, where they're really understaffed and they're having a difficult time trying to record, to recruit new officers. Those are the problems that you run into with, you know, when you deal with those issues.
Thank you.
If you run your household or a business, it's really important to have reserves in case you get injured on the job or you lose your job. Families deal with this all the time, and businesses deal with this all the time. And I, I don't think our cities should be any different. I think we should operate our city budget like a business. And I think we should have at least a three- to six-month reserve in case there's a catastrophic event that happens to Casper, or if there's a massive economic plunge that happens to the country that affects us greatly. As a percentage, I don't think there's a, a percentage would be appropriate, but three to six months, I think, is a smart goal.
Thank you.
Obviously, I, I support having a reserve account. And personally, I would like to see at about 180 days of operating revenue in, in that account. And that's, that's as if every cent of tax money stopped coming into the city, we could still operate at the level we're operating at for 180 days. That's about the level that I would like to see it at and would be most comfortable with.
We absolutely need a reserve fund out there. I'm not going to put a percentage on it either, because again, this comes down, a lot of times, where do we get our money from? We find places to cut that. And in several situations within the city, you have people that retire or, or positions have become vacant. They never get filled again. And then you end up in a situation where, I'll use the police department as an example, you end up having short staff that take place out there. You don't have enough people on the streets to take care of, of matters. And that affects everybody in the community itself. But there's other places that may take cuts too, and that becomes your employees' benefits. You know, they could certainly take away from areas of vacation time. It's my understanding now that they're possibly, the city's possibly looking at combining vacation and disability, which is actually going to come at a percentage of loss to the city employees themselves from what they currently get. So, it affects people across the board. That money has to come from somewhere and, in order to have that reserve fund there. And so, we need to keep that in mind. So, I wouldn't put a percentage on it.
That's a dynamic question. It's easy to say, "Let's have a, a reserve," sure. But as Pete has mentioned, you know, he's talking about growing our city. Let's talk about recruitment and retention of new businesses. And, yeah, we need to have, as Sean said, three to six months reserve is, would be wonderful. But how are we going to get that? And when you start talking about taking away from city employees and, and cutting this and that, we're not going to have recruitment and retention, because who wants to work for a city where we don't take care of our employees? As far as cutting farther into our budget, I think it's imperative that we do not take away from the vulnerable and oppressed populations that we have that depend on, on some of these programs and resources to, to survive. So, it, it's really a dynamic question, for sure. Thank you.
I'd love to claim credit for it, but...
Yeah, great, good question.
Very dynamic. Obviously, I support the general fund reserve. I like the fact that we are talking about, in case something happens to our community, we have to think about this. I don't know if you remember, but my first year on council was 2001. And we all know what happened that year. And that was a different reality that this community had to go through. And we still are kind of going through that in some respects. I like the 180 days of operating revenue, knowing that our community can sustain and, and support each other during that time. When it comes to the things about business and stuff like that, though, we have, you know, business entities like CADA that's supposed to be part of that. And I feel that maybe CADA needs to step up their game a little bit more in terms of getting the businesses retained to come here. I haven't seen a lot of activity. So, I guess when it, when it comes to having our outlets, we already have outlets for business infrastructures, so.
Giving an accountant a question about budgets and giving me one minute, I will do my best. Obviously, I agree with everybody else, a reserve is necessary. That isn't even really a point of discussion, I think. I don't think that putting a percentage on it is appropriate. So, I mean, I could be wrong, but in theory, what I would recommend is, Casper's a boom and bust cyclical economy. I mean, we can map out like prior periods of boom and bust and see, okay, well, you know, historically speaking, like when we enter the bust, we've needed, I don't know, eight months of expenses in reserves, whatever that might be. Obviously, I don't know the number. But I mean, it's mathematical calculation. It's not just an arbitrary, "Well, half a year or 50%." I mean, we have the data. Our economy is predictable because we've been in booms and busts. I mean, as far back as we probably have recorded financial data in the city of Casper. And so, there's an easy way to map that. Obviously, you have to project it forward for things have changed. I mean, money's worth different what it was worth in 1980. Sorry, I could go on forever. But that's, I think there's an easy way to map that and get an actual realistic number as to what it could be.
Thank you very much. We've been going approximately an hour. You've been sitting there with everybody staring at you. Would you care to stand up and stretch? And we'll start again in about two minutes. Does that sound good?
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I knew when they were done.
Thank you.
Also, great, all my notes.
The way we can get to all of these questions, they're just, they're beautiful.
Questions after these.
I'm excited for the next one.
We're gonna be great.
Do I want to continue that?
Oh, no.
Thank you.
I have our...
Ah, that...
I never pick up on that stuff, so just tell me if someone sees it.
That's not...
This looks a lot like that other question that we have, doesn't it?
Oh, did you? Oh, okay. That's my reference with certain topics.
Well, that's right, yeah.[1201.15]
Have all of the candidates in place? We'll start again.
Way too opinionated.
Okay. It's become pretty obvious that unless we want to stay, oh, perhaps until tomorrow, there is no way that we're going to be able to address all of the excellent questions that have come to us. And so with your kind permission, I will use my judgment to skip from one to another. Some people may be disappointed if theirs doesn't get asked, but for the sake of expedience and because tempus fugit and so must we at a particular point later in the evening, we'll just skip around and see what we can do. But since money is always an issue. Several of the questions deal with money, but this one comes pretty close to covering a lot of the issues. The city's main revenue resource, of course, is sales tax. For the first three months of this fiscal year, tax revenue is running a little below budget. And I see the figure on here, it goes on to say about 2.7 million a month that we're running, that we're short of? All right. If economic conditions remain unchanged, are there more adjustments you would make to the city's operating budget? Well, now that part could just be answered yes or no. So if you would elaborate and tell us what adjustments you would make, that might be it. But if economic conditions remain unchanged, are there more adjustments you would make to the city's operating budget? And then I would add, and what might those be? And we'll start with you, Mr. Bates.
To be honest with you, adjustments would have to be made. What adjustments? I could not say because I don't have all the facts and information in front of me to sit there and say, hey, we need to adjust this, adjust that. There would have to be an adjustment, but what adjustments? I could not answer, and I apologize.
Thank you.
Well, obviously, the city has to operate by law with a balanced budget. If revenues fall short, that falls into that painful area that I talked about earlier that you have to keep in mind that when you start cutting things, you hurt people, and it hurts people. And you have to do that in a manner, hopefully, that minimizes that harm, minimizes that hurt. Public safety is obviously a number one priority. But also, the problem is that the police and fire departments are a very great lion's share of the city's budget. And so, you know, you have to have that as a priority. The idea that we're going to grow our way out of financial problems, that would be ideal, but that's a little bit Pollyanna and a little bit pie in the sky. If that worked, you know, it would have worked a long time ago, and we wouldn't have the boom and bust cycles that we do now. But those are just very, very difficult, hard decisions. And when they start impacting people, that's really a tough problem.
Thank you.
I believe that if you had to pick to make cuts, I don't like cutting jobs or cutting people because that has a spiraling effect on the economy because those people are no longer earning, and then they can no longer contribute to the economy. I think typically the first things that need to be cut are things that are not necessary right now. The city forecasts out what repairs need to be made, infrastructure, roads, bridges, that type of thing. And so those are the things that I personally would want to cut first. Okay, we don't have the money right now. We can put off some of those repairs, and maybe if things rebound next year, we can make those a priority. So I would not want to cut people and jobs.
Well, thankfully, we have that cushion called a reserve, but obviously, you can't rely on that forever. There would obviously have to be cuts made. Personally, I believe that the function of the city is to provide certain essential services, being public safety and infrastructure. So those would obviously stay priority in my mind. Specifically, I would cut, I couldn't tell you. Again, it's a prioritization that the entire council needs to be involved in.
Thank you.
Yes, obviously, cuts for the budget itself would have to take place. What's going to have the least impact on the community itself? Obviously, you still are going to have your need for police and fire, you're going to need your need for sanitation, picking up your trash, snowplows, moving the snow out of the way, those type of things. So whatever's going to have the least impact, and again, I'm just like everybody else, I'm not going to be able to sit here and tell you what would be cut, but those items that I would look at personally needing to be cut are those that would have the very least impact, and then you'd have to work your way back up the line from there.
Thank you.
I would call upon my constituents for their input. It's their money. How do they want it spent? And when things need to be cut, you know, it's been said before. I think you would have to start with some of the fluff and the beautification and things that are not essential to people surviving.
Thank you.
Obviously, that is a difficult question, and the answers are just extremely as difficult. I think the needs of the community, the needs of our infrastructure are things that we shouldn't try to cut away from. Our beautification efforts, definitely, those are things that we could wait a couple of years for. I know that there's been great strides with the parkways and the trails, but, you know, we need to, I have a concern about cutting our infrastructure because we have outdated infrastructure, and we really need to kind of concentrate on staying ahead of the game and not piecemeal it. Because as you know, if you just piecemeal it, it's going to cost us more to fix something in the long run. So I have a concern about cutting anything that deals with infrastructure, so.
Budgeting 101. Needs come first, then come wants. So we hope that we're in the situation that our budget has fully addressed our needs and that there was budget room left that we allocated to the wants. Where we run into the issue is when that revenue window narrows, those wants either aren't funded at all, or they're funded less and less and less. The scary part is when we get into the fact of we need to start discussing changing the funding or the amounts on the needs. Ultimately, that discussion becomes what is absolutely necessary for the city to function and to serve its citizens on the basic level. And that's a prioritization that city council has to ultimately make when it gets to that position.
So, in theory, cutting is easy, in theory. In practicality, we've been faced with trying to make cuts on the city council, and when you touch sacred cows or things like that, you certainly get community members that come out, and they will fight for it. And so it becomes extremely difficult in order to make cuts. Some people said fluff, and so when your nine members and 300 people filled the gallery and emails, it's hard to make cuts. We need to balance the budget, and we are in not only making tough decisions now, but in the next year or two, we are going to have to make more tough decisions. So this council coming up is going to have to make some tough decisions to make sure that things are balanced. That's going to be critical, and it's not going to be easy, but there will be some tough decisions to be made and sacred cows that we may have to touch and deal with in the next few years.
Thank you. And it leads directly into the next question. Are there positions or services within, oh, this says county government? You suppose that was written that way on purpose?
No.
Thank you. Are there positions or services within city government that you see as unnecessary or which could perhaps be better handled by the private sector?
I get to go first.
Wait, I didn't skip you on that last question, did I?
No.
You started, very good.
Ken said he wants to go again.
Are there positions? Maybe, probably. The problem is, though, when you start talking about privatization, that's a really dangerous thing. There are core functions that government is there to serve, and that's different from what private people, what private business, you know, let's face it, motivation for private business is to make money. Now, we could privatize all of our streets, and you could have to pay every single time you go drive down a street. That's not going to work. And so there are core functions that are best functioned, best served by government. We have to look at those things. I think that we are in a pretty lean operation in the city of Casper. I don't think that we have a lot of fluff, a lot of irrelevant things out there, things that you could privatize out. You know, years and years ago, sanitation service was contracted out, and a private company handled all that.
Thank you.
Didn't work too good.
As the city of Casper's government grew during the boom, so did jobs, and they hired more people to handle that boom. Now that we're in leaner times, I have been a big fan of the city that they have cut some of those positions, and they've done it mostly through attrition. So if somebody retired, they did not replace those. So I don't think there's anything that comes to mind off the top of my head that there's a position we don't not need right now. And the second half of that question was, could you repeat the second half of that question? I'm sorry. Oh, privatization.
Do you think there are services that could perhaps be better handled by the private sector?
I'm not a big fan of privatizing community services. I think the government has done a nice job in Casper overseeing those, and if it's not broke, don't fix it.
I think Mike hit the nail right on the head, and we have slimmed down the size of city government through attrition. I don't think that there's any specific positions within the city government that are nonessential at this point. There are certain things that government should have oversight of, and a lot of those core things like infrastructure and public service. As Mike mentioned, the private sector's goal is to make money. The government is there as a neutral party to make sure that all people's needs are met, supposed to be, anyway. It doesn't always work that way, but that's how it's supposed to be.
Thank you.
I would say I don't know of any services or positions within the city now that I could see that would be better off privatized at all. There are areas, when I was in the police department, that we would certainly look at. I could tell you, go to the city garage and get an oil change, and it seemed like it was twice as much as what it would cost you to go to the quick loop down the street, and we'd always question that. But as far as privatizing, even in that example, sending cars out to be maintained elsewhere, I don't think, there's a need within the city itself. The city runs itself perfectly that way, and to privatize anything like that, I just don't see it happening or working well at all.
Thank you very much.
I can't think of one example where privatization would be appropriate, so that's my answer.
I can't think of anything that would be right off the bat. The only thing I can think of, and I know that has been cut, was the little old man with the cigar that used to be downtown and used to collect the garbage. Do you remember him, Ray? I remember, yeah. I don't see him anymore. I do know our parking attendants and I call them our parking Nazis, you know, these are services that we need. We're, you know, people are like, get rid of the parking people. No, you can't get rid of these things. So in terms of privatization, I don't support anything in terms of that. And it seems like the city's done that before and has learned its lesson, so.
I definitely don't want to make any statements as far as reducing positions or functions. I think the city's actually done a pretty good job over the past period of taking, looking at positions that maybe could be consolidated between departments or actual individual positions. And Mike said it first, and he said it right. There are very different motivations between government employment and private employment. And so I think that it's always up for discussion as far as if something could be privatized, but it's definitely a fine line to walk and to make sure, to be very careful when making that jump.
You know, I think the city, in my four years on being on council, I found that the city actually runs a very tight ship and does a really good job with the departments that they, that we oversee, sanitation, et cetera, those things that we sometimes take for granted. So they do a good job in that. Other areas, I'm not going to make any generalizations of who I think could be cut or who could be privatized. But I will say that I certainly would be open in having that conversation if the time did come forward that we would have to look at reducing costs if privatization would help ease our budget. I would be open to considering that conversation. Not say that that would be the final say, but certainly would be open to that conversation depending upon what that would look like.
To make cuts, it's not ideal, and not to see what position is more important than others. Again, I have nothing to say, hey, we need to make, we can make a few cuts here as much as that would affect people and family. So to not have any documentation and sit there and say, yes, what I could and what I couldn't, I could not give you an answer on that. If, as Chuck said, if we had to do some things private to ease the burden on others, then it's not ideal, but if it helps, then that's what would need to be looked at.
Thank you. The last couple of questions remind me of that old cliche that goes, if it were an easy job, anybody could do it. And again, we thank you for the courage to step up to the plate and try to be one of the people that solve all of those problems. The recently updated, how important do you think it is for the city to continue to fund services for seniors like CATC and the Senior Center?
Because they are leaving the state of Wyoming at an alarming rate.
I think senior services are essential, CATC being one of them, and the Senior Center was one that wanted a full funding of CATC, the last go-around that came up here. I think that it's imperative that the city assist those in need, whether it be elderly or poor, to get the services that they need to live their lives.
Well, I believe that CATC should be funded, and the Senior Center itself, I guess a little different way of looking at it is with the Senior Center, I think if you're going to start making cuts, instead of making a huge cut in something like that, it should be across the board, so you need to look at other things. And I'll probably get yelled at by my wife by saying this, but my kids are big hockey, you know, they play hockey and love hockey, but I think across the board, if you're going to make cuts in the Senior Center, then you need to be looking at the rec center, you need to be looking at the ice rink, you need to be looking at Hoganon, different places that you can take smaller bites out of it and not necessarily put that burden all back onto the Senior Center itself.
You know, mental health is largely unaddressed, and there aren't a lot of resources available as far as, we're not where we need to be as far as taking care of mental health. And when you start talking about vulnerable and oppressed populations, particularly elderly people who use the Senior Center and CATC as not just a way to survive and to live and to function in our community, but it's vital for their psyche to have the services provided that are provided at the Senior Center. So when you start talking about cutting from, you know, services that are imperative to the mental health of vulnerable and oppressed populations, then we have a real big problem. So, no.
Thank you.
Our senior services are critical for this community. You know, I took care of my dad the last years of his life here, and I can tell you I'm glad that we had the services that we did for the four and a half years of, it was hard. But the one thing I can tell you is that this community does support its seniors, and our retirement elderly deserve anything that we can give them. So to talk about cuts, you know, that's, that will never happen. If I serve on council, I will not cut anything dealing with our senior infrastructure. Like I said, it worked for my dad, it worked for me, there was counseling. It's hard to be taking care of our elderly, but definitely, we need these services to remain relevant. And it's a great place to retire. I'm going to say, other than the weather, it's a great place to retire, so.
I'm enjoying it.
I love it. I'll probably grow old and die here.
We've all talked about listening to the citizens of Casper and how they feel on issues, and last time CATC funding was discussed, I think it was made very clear how the citizens of Casper feel about funding decreases to senior services. We're not alone in having a senior population growth. This is the entire country, and so other communities will feel the pressure as well to not defund those, not defund, cut funding on those areas, but we could also use our resources to talk to other communities of how they are making that work.
So I think a primary responsibility of, I think of our city government is to continue to support the most vulnerable in our community, that being the elderly, those that are in poverty, et cetera. Continuing to fund, Kristen had missed mention that we had that conversation about CATC and how we were looking at trying to make some adjustments to that budget. And when we look at it, some difficult decisions to what we need to be able to do. It's a critical service that not only the elderly, but those that are disabled utilize CATC to get to jobs, go to church, whatever it may be. So it's critical that we continue to fund CATC and the senior services. It is difficult because that would mean making sure that we're funding these, then that would also mean there has to be cut somewhere else. So it's very difficult when you look at those things, and when people get into council, it becomes very, very difficult to make those decisions.
I believe that we would not be here if it wasn't for the generation before us. And I don't know if any of those people that are on the wall are seniors here in Casper still that utilize the things that are here. They paved the way. I've always told my kids, my three kids back there and other kids, that my grandma died, was brought here on a train to Wyoming. She saw the first microwave, she saw the first TV, she saw flat-screen TVs, she's seen more in her lifetime, and others at that age have seen more in their lifetime than I will ever see in my lifetime. And it is imperative that we take care of the older generation and thank them for paving the way for every single person that ever sits up here or any other job you ever do.
Support and care for our most vulnerable people, including senior citizens, absolutely has to be a priority. Things like CATC, for many of those people, that is a true lifeline. That is something that they depend on on a daily basis, they really depend on those things. We need to be supportive of those things. The other thing, and I don't want to sound cold or calculating about this, but this is an economic development issue as well. The reason that Medicare was passed back in the mid-'60s wasn't some altruistic, well, we're going to take care of these old people. The primary motivation for that was that there were middle-aged parents of college-aged kids who could not afford to send their kids to college because they were having to pay grandma and grandpa's medical bills. The government sat there and thought, huh, how's a way we could fix that? So that was one of the big motivations for Medicare back then. It has a big economic impact, and we need to recognize that, too.
Did we start with you on that one, Mr. Rowan? Very well. You will find that that one was a springboard into the next one. And as many of you said, part of the responsibility of society, at least a society that cares about its people, is to take care of those who are most vulnerable, the most vulnerable members of our society. And so this next question takes what you said and allows you to expand, if you will. Do you believe the city council? And if you wish, it doesn't just have to be the city council, you could make that the community in general. Of course, you represent the community. Do you believe the city council has a role in addressing social services needs such as affordable housing, poverty, homelessness, mental illness? How would you use city resources to address those needs?
Me, right?
Yes.
Absolutely. And one of the resource, biggest resource that we have to address those needs is the One Cent Funds, which is up for vote again this time. which is up for vote again this time around. It's, it's an essential part of, of, of some of the social services that we have in this community. A lot of the nonprofits in the community come up and ask for money, and they're the ones that help the community directly. It is absolutely the job of a city to address those things, especially the, excuse me, the elderly, those in poverty, and those that are having mental health issues.
Thank you.
I agree with, yeah, we absolutely need to make sure that those are funded. Without them, you have, go back to law enforcement again, you have people that have mental issues. If we didn't have places to take them to address those issues, then we have people that we will be dealing with on a constant basis out in public. Same with homelessness. Homelessness, we watch it, you know, obviously in the wintertime, our homeless population drops because it gets cold here, and they don't want to be here. Summertime, it explodes, but without that, take the wintertime, for instance, with homeless, with the homeless population out there, it gets cold here, and not having the services to get them to where they have a place to stay, meals to eat, and get them out from those elements would be, would be terrible. So we absolutely need to, to fund those and make sure those services are there, and we should be a part of that.
Thank you.
Will you repeat that question for me, please?
Absol-, oh, well, including my embellishment on some, okay. Do you believe the, it says city council, but I'm expanding that to the community in general, society has a role in addressing social services needs such as affordable housing, poverty, homelessness, mental illness? How would you use city resources to address those needs?
Boy, Sean said it, I'm, I'm a huge supporter of the One Cent Tax, and so much of that money was just distributed to the nonprofits in town. I think the key word that you used, though, was the city council. What was the first part of the question?
Well, it specifically says, do you believe the city council has a role? And you may limit it to that, or you may speak of the Casper community in general.
I'm going to limit it to that for now. You know, it's easy to say, yeah, let's throw money towards, to help the, help the poor and help the needy and help. But when members of oppressed populations come to this council, how are they treated? And do the members that sit on this council have an idea of how some of these programs work? What's the interaction? I think council members have a huge responsibility to be very much involved in the services that are available to oppressed and vulnerable populations, absolutely.
Thank you very much.
That was good, Amy. I own a little restaurant that's open at six in the morning, and I have a lot of homeless people downtown during that time. And homelessness and mental illness work hand in hand, unfortunately. I hired a young man that turned eighteen and had schizophrenia. He only worked for me for a few months, and as soon as he turned eighteen, he was out on his own, and I still see him from time to time. So I believe that this council and any council should be able to support and to do anything, and to find the resources to educate ourselves of the services that we have. There's a lot I still don't know, so that would be something that I would definitely look into. But we need to communicate these entities together so we can work hand in hand. I do have some homeless people that come in that I feed. A lot of them don't, they can't afford their medications. It's just a, it's just a kind of an evil cycle that starts, and it's imperative that we, as a community, support our homeless and our mentally ill and our elderly, so.
Thank you.
When we say we serve the citizens, there's no distinction. We serve the healthy, we serve the sick, we serve the rich, we serve the poor. If they're a citizen of this community, we serve them. And so I guess for me, it's obviously an easy answer, that it's, city council has a role in addressing those issues. Sean's right, one percent is the way to do it, because we have an amazing, amazing nonprofits in this town that address all of those issues specifically. They have experts, they have knowledge. They know how to at least help with those issues. I'm not saying solve. And so by One Cent Funding, we can help them achieve those goals.
So apart from helping agencies financially, the city council, which we do do that in many fashions, one way is the One Cent Fund, we also have the Casper Housing Authority, which is the housing arm of the city, Casper Community Action Partnership, and the list goes on, where we partner with several agencies to be able to function that. But beyond that, the opportunity to be able to help those that are in need, the city council should play a function within that. But above and beyond that, what the city council member should also be doing is serving as leadership to be able to say, okay, being set that example of how a community can help those that are most vulnerable. We are only as strong as the weakest person, and we want to hopefully lift people up and be able to do that and be leaders. And I think that's one of the critical roles of a city council member.
I definitely believe that we need to help where we can, when we can, and how we can. The One Cent Fund utilized correctly and spent correctly in the organizations that are out there to help them. Help them, I think, is very important. But more important, we need to also look at, as our poor, how do we help them get on their feet? We can feed them. There's an old saying that you can feed a man a fish for a day, or you can teach him to fish, and they'll eat for a lifetime. And I think teaching and educating and helping in those manners is probably one of the most key things that we need to do. But to, to find those services that will do that in the huge amount of, as many different things there is, we need to help.
I'm very proud of the heritage of the city of Casper in providing support through the One Cent, as well as through other entities and other, other ways for our vulnerable population. I would note that no other governmental entity locally does that, very few others in the state do that. The city of Casper has a proud heritage, which I certainly will work to continue to, to pursue, to support those, those kind of needs. And I think this all fits together with the fact that the city's obligation to provide first and foremost for the health and safety of its citizens. And that health and safety, that's a very broad concept. We need to try to make sure that our people live in safe houses, that they don't live in houses that are caving in and falling apart. We need to try to have things that can help people that are down on their luck and having difficulty with those kind of things. And those are some of the priorities that I would work for.
I think our community has some amazing services for homelessness, mental illness, disabilities, for people under eighteen. Once you become eighteen, those services get a lot more difficult to attain. And so I would like our focus to be on that, because we already do take care of our youth very well. There's a lot of subsidies available from the federal and state governments for affordable housing, and I think it's incumbent upon us to make sure that we have as much affordable housing, especially in boom cycles, because housing can get so unaffordable for the, those in poverty in this community. So it's important for us to make sure we are keeping affordable housing a priority.
We have a question here that, I think, based upon all the answers, we can, we can safely skip. For example, do you support the One Cent? And how would you prioritize the revenue? So is there anybody that does not support the One Cent? Okay, and you've all told us how you might prioritize that, so I think we can safely go on right to the next one. I didn't miss anybody on that. We started with you. Okay, very good. For you personally, I love questions that start that way. For you personally, what is the value of a good library to a community? We got a reaction from the audience on that one. Okay, very good, okay. For you personally, what is the value of a good library to a community? And do you support bringing a new library to Casper slash Natrona County?
Yes, I do support bringing a new library in. What I think with our youth, you look at it today, technology has taken over the world, and everybody can Google anything. You can go online, get any book you want, but you still have all those, you have resources down there that date back, date way back, to where the youth can go down there, a book in hand is a lot better, I believe, than eyes on a screen. And that's where the value comes in with the new, with the library itself. Not only that, it still provides services for people that, that can't afford, you have a lot of people that can't afford to have a computer or access to that, and it allows them that access also. So I believe it, it has a very valuable, it's a very valuable tool to the community itself, and I think a new one is needed and should be put in place.
Thank you.
Personally, I have a client here who was a member of Friends of the Library for many years. My grandma served on the board of the library, not in Casper. She was passionate about it. You walk downtown, and one of the busiest places in town surrounds the library, partially because of the transit station there, but partially because that's a hub for people who are using the bus, using CATSI, using the parks, trying to get to Joshua Storehouse. It's easy to say, yeah, you can just Google it or buy a book online. When you're having to depend on the bus and use CATSI and Joshua Storehouse and some of the other resources that are right there by the library, boy, isn't it handy to have internet and all those wonderful resources at your fingertips? Do we need a new library? Absolutely.
I obviously support the, a new library. I've been going to this one since, oh, gosh, three or four years old. I have my secret little Heidi places where I can go and read and be left alone. It is, and when I do go there, obviously, we go there to vote, and then we go there to get information. I see, my employees are always going down there to research and educate themselves on maybe some other job openings and stuff like that. You know, you call it centrally located. I like our library. To say, do I wish we had a new library? Yes, I do. I'm just really attached to the old one. And I wish that we could have it in our ability to work on the infrastructure and to do something with that. I don't think that there is the ability to do that. I think there's some infrastructure issues within the building. And, but yeah, I obviously support a new library if that, if that ever could happen.
Literacy is a huge barrier that a lot of us take for granted for people to make the difference between poverty to making it. Our library here has so many programs that are available to the public, most of which are no charge. They have adult book clubs, they have teen book clubs. I mean, I take my kids every single week to get new books. Used to go on Sunday, now going on Sundays right now. It's an enormous part of just my life, let alone everyone else in the community. We most certainly need a new library. I agree that keeping it downtown is definitely essential, I think, especially for the population that utilizes the library. They provide more value than I think appears on the surface.
When I first got onto council, this was before Lisa became the director, I was invited to take a tour of the library. And it is, I don't want to use the word ridiculous, it's a little dramatic, I'll use it. It's a little ridiculous, the, the needs that they, that it needs. If you haven't taken a, taken a tour or whatever, you should go to the library and, and ask them, and they'll show you the needs that they, that is, the library, we're in need of a new library. And so to make it short, yes, I support a new library, and I hope our community does rally behind when that day comes, that they start moving towards building a new library, because I think it will happen, that we will have a new library in this community. Huge supporter of the Teen Zone, our Teen Zone, or for our young people, it's critical for our youth. And so I'm hoping that our community will rally around the library, it'll make this easy.
Excuse me. I remember being at Park Elementary School a while ago, and I don't have a problem saying I'm thirty-eight, so it's been a little while ago, walking to the library, going downstairs, and hearing some librarian read a story, the witch's bubbles, bubbles, I can't remember, and I apologize. But I remember sitting there, listening to that, and then checking out the books, except they had the old index cards. So I'm glad we've improved from that.
That was our Google.
I do hope that we do get a new library. I hope it does stay downtown. I hope there's somewhere, some way that the city, the council, the community can come together and say, hey, we need it, but we want it here, still downtown. I'd like to see it next to the Nicolaysen Art Museum. I think they go hand in hand in a lot of ways.
I absolutely support expanding and improving the library. If you look at the current facility that we have, it was, the big part of the library was built in the nineteen fifty's. The new part of the library was built in the nineteen seventies. Few things have changed since then. We need to, we need to get up to date and get up, get going with the library. A library is an incredibly important resource to a community. I personally don't use the library. I have other ways that I do research when I need to learn something, when I want to learn something. I have other means of doing research. Many people don't have that educational background, they don't have whatever means that I am fortunate to have. The library is an excellent resource for them, and I think that it needs to be there. And the real value is the, those kind of amenities improve the whole community. The old idea that a rising tide raises all boats, really, a resource like the library is part of that rising tide. And if your community has a good library, it's going to help your whole community.
I've been there several times, and it is highly utilized. Our library is very busy. When you walk in, the computers are all taken, filled up, people are using them all day long. That's great. And one of the things I noticed is you don't see a lot of people in three-piece suits over there. It's really serving our poorer community and our, you know, middle-income community. So we really need that, and we really do need an update. If you walk in there, it needs a lot of TLC. And at this point, it's kind of cost prohibitive to put a ton of money into that old place. There's some great property right behind David Street Station that would keep it downtown, and maybe we could keep the library there. I do think it's important for the city, when they think there's something extremely valuable like the David Street Station, that's going to really be good for the community. I think it is important for the city to put some resources towards that, so that we make sure that we're serving our population.
I do support the library, and I think it plays an important role in Casper. Since I've been on council, I think we've supported the library with One Cent Funds, the last cycle to the tune of about eight hundred thousand dollars or so, and this go around to about three hundred thousand dollars. I understand because of, especially because of the economy, the library's kind of taken a bottom spot on the totem pole when it comes to, to funding. Do I support a new library? Sure. But I do think that that is a, a whole community involvement that, that needs to be. It doesn't, it doesn't fall strictly on this city council, it doesn't fall strictly on the county commission. I think it takes all aspects of the community to come together to make that happen.
I hope everyone will indulge me for just a moment. I have a question I want to ask everyone, not just you candidates, but everyone in the room. Raise your hand if you remember when you got your first library card.
I actually had to get a new one. I actually had to get a new one because they still didn't, they didn't have mine on record anymore.
I remember the Carnegie Library in Belfour, South Dakota. My sister took me there and they gave me books. How awesome was that? Again, thank you for indulging me on that, that personal, personal tack. Oh, well, let's see. Oh, my gracious. Tempest Fugit, yes.
Dinner time.
We were going to wrap up about 8:30, weren't we?
There's a wild card game going on right now. I'm not sure if you...
We'll ask one more, and then you'll all have one minute to wrap up. The city council recently passed a resolution against discrimination of LGBT, and there's other initials or letters that go beyond that, citizens. If you make it to the city council, would you support an ordinance offering specific protections against such, against discrimination for LGBT individuals? Why or why not? So I guess that one addresses the idea of going beyond a resolution to an actual ordinance.
Interesting. It's back to me? I would definitely talk to my constituents. I know that there were questions raised when it came to the difference between a resolution and ordinance, and what it meant to business owners and the community itself. That's a tough one. But I'll tell you, you know, the golden rule kind of just rings true, and love one another, and be kind to one another. And it's discouraging to me that we need ordinances to, to ensure that that happens. But, you know, I, when you start talking about government overreach and, and more rules and more laws, I think that's dangerous territory. But bottom line is, every single person, LGBT, young, old, race, doesn't matter. Start making laws and things get complicated, but everyone deserves respect, dignity, and...
Thank you.
Can you repeat the question again?
We know the city council recently passed a resolution against discrimination toward LGBT citizens. If you are elected to the city council, would you support an ordinance offering specific protections against discrimination for LGBT individuals? Why or why not?
I support the resolution that the community has passed through. I was also one of the businesses that was, I guess we have a map of business-friendly places, and I'm one of them. I can tell you that I do have discrimination that happens at my bistro once a week. And I feel that if we have to have an ordinance, it would be because the situation that I see every week at my place would become more of an issue. I don't think right now it is an issue. I also would like to, you know, talk to my friends in the group to see if, if they feel that that is sufficient enough. I feel that I can, and I've had to defend a couple of my customers in my place, so...
Thank you, Jackie.
Anyway, so I would support an ordinance if it needed to happen. I'm, I'm feeling that the resolution is, is working for us at this point.
Thank you.
We have a fantastic resource in which that could tell us if this ordinance was necessary or the feet on the ground and how they felt. Chief McFeeters, along with Carter's help, we could discuss with him what he's seeing. If they're seeing like a string of crimes associated with this. And then, obviously, per his recommendation, he could let us know if he thought this ordinance would give more teeth. I don't like the term, but like, to hate crimes. That's not quite what I'm getting at. But he would be the perfect resource to tell us how it would impact the community and if he felt it was necessary.
Thank you.
So this was a very, now I don't want to say controversial, but it was a very intense debate that we had when we did the resolution and we talked about that. I think first and foremost, and I've been on record on saying this multiple times, I wouldn't support an ordinance. But I think the understanding of what we can do as a community, when we have to understand what does it mean when we try to treat all people with dignity, respect, and understanding and compassion. And I think it's unfortunate that we have to have laws to, to try to do those things. But I think it's critical that we examine, if things escalate or things get worse, how does a city municipality deal with it? What would that look like? I know current Lee Jackson and Laramie have ordinances to that tune. But at this time, I, I wouldn't. But I would hope that our community continues to respect and give dignity to everybody.
Not just for LGBT, but for anyone and everyone that feels discriminated against, I would agree with an ordinance. I think that there is even some still racist, that some feel they are better than, whether you're Muslim, you're black, you're Hispanic, whatever it is. I still believe that in a whole manner, we have an issue. And the ordinance would need to be for everyone, not just specific, talked about a group. But I believe in the citizens of Casper that we are better than that, that we don't need an ordinance. I believe that the citizens of Casper have more respect for one another and for everyone than to ever really have to bring that in, as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you.
The short answer to that question is that it would depend on the, the language of the ordinance, the width, the breadth, how it was drafted, what all it covered. As a general proposition, I absolutely support and defend the idea that all citizens are entitled to free exercise of their civil rights, regardless of their sexual orientation, regardless of any of those kinds of factors, much like race, creed, all of those things. And I, I think that that's just really important, that we respect all of the various citizens, all of the, you know, the, the great variety of people that make up our community and that make up the United States. We need to respect that diversity. And if we respect that diversity, that makes all of us, our whole community, stronger. To the extent that that diversity is disrespected, then I think it hurts the entire community. And so, it, it would really have to depend on how such an ordinance was drafted and what all it covered.
Discrimination of any kind is completely unacceptable. And I think our city council made a bold statement that supports that this past year. I'm not a big fan of passing laws when laws already exist. So there are a lot of anti-discrimination laws that already exist, and hate crime laws and things like that. So I don't think an ordinance would be necessary. And I do have some issue with making ordinance for specific groups, because where does that stop? I think the ordinances that exist cover those individuals already against hate crimes and discrimination.
I absolutely would not favor an ordinance. You cannot legislate kindness, you cannot legislate manners. It is not the role of government to, to do that either. I don't support discrimination, but like it or not, hate will always be there. And hate has just as much of a constitutional right to express itself as you do. It is not the role of government to shut that down. You will see the First Amendment gutted if we continue down this road. I did not support the resolution either. And the reason being is I don't support the idea of protected classes, period. We are all people. I don't care what color you are. I don't care what your sexual orientation is or what your religion is. We are all people, and we should live and let live. Continuing to divide ourselves into these little groups here and there is only further divides us as a nation. So, no, no one an ordinance, no one a resolution, we need to stop.
There are laws in place that would handle something like this. As far as a discrimination ordinance, if there had to be one put in place, I would support a discrimination ordinance itself. Not in a group in particular, because it needs to cover everybody. Every gamut that you can possibly think of. So if, as has been said here, if you put it to a specific group, there are going to be other people that are going to come along, and they're going to want to be added to that group. So if it was written properly and as a discrimination ordinance itself that covered everybody equally, then I would be in favor of that. But again, there are laws in place right now that would handle those things. So at this point, I would tell you no.
Thank you. And as I said before, time flies. We were only able to get to approximately half of the questions that came to us, both before and during. There are some beautiful ones here that I would, I would love to toss out there. But we're now at the point where you can have one minute to wrap up. One minute can be a short amount of time or a long amount of time, depending upon how you approach it and what all you might have to say. I think it was Einstein who said, "A minute with your hand on the stove is eternity. A minute with somebody that you, whose company you enjoy is only a second." So whether the minute is a long time for you, or just right, or not enough, well, I guess we'll find out as we go along. And so, I believe, Ms. Anderson, you have the privilege of being first.
I want to thank everybody tonight to come and to support this, and thank you for the invitation. Running for any government office is courageous. And every one of us, I believe, are qualified to hold a seat on this council. But it obviously is up to you to vote for us. I encourage everyone out there to talk to each other, to talk, to ask what ward their person is in, to talk about issues, to get maybe three people to go with them and to get a vote on. One, one vote makes a difference, you know. Be, be, become part of the solution, not part of the problem. I love this town, and I want to serve it, if you do allow me to do that. I encourage everyone to get involved in their community and involved with their council. These people are not hard to, to talk to. And I believe that we all can work together to make Casper even better. It's already pretty awesome, so, thank you.
Obviously, thank you to the library and the women of, League of Women Voters for having us here. Thank you for moderating. And thank you guys for coming. You've been here for over two hours, sitting here and listening to us talk. That's a lot. And also, people at home watching on TV. I mean, at the end of the day, those of us who are here, more than likely, we've chosen to make our lives in Casper. We've chosen to be part of this community in one way or another. And this is just another form of that, and serving. I would love to serve in the sense of this could be a contribution to the city and to represent other people's voices.
Thank you to the library, League of Women Voters. Mr. Stedeli, who was a former teacher of mine, probably the best teacher I ever had.
Thank you, Mr....
That gives me an extra five seconds, correct?
Give them ten.
I'll make this short. I've learned in the last four years, watching the, how civil discourse has changed in our country. And when we look at the local level of what we can do, it is so vital that we communicate and that we talk. We are always going to disagree. We're never going to agree on everything. But one of the greatest things that we have in this democracy is the opportunity that we see every one of each other with respect, and we have a dignity for each person. And I believe that this country has certainly needs that now more than ever, that we need to be able to have that. And so, my hope is to continue that dialogue for our community, because we need that. Thank you.
As everyone said, thank you for those that are watching on TV or Internet, computer, tablets, phone, and those that are here, that were here, thank you. Thank you for this opportunity. I want to thank you for this opportunity to be able to, be able to possibly get this position. I think it's awesome that we are all able to hear, to answer these questions. My last thing I want to say is, Facebook, @kennethbates.yo. I would like to know questions. I don't, I can't promise you I'd answer every single one of them, but I'd sure like to give it a try, so you know where I stand and what I believe. So please, write that down. I'm not trying to sell myself, but I'd like to hear more of the questions. Thank you. And thank you, gals, for running. I am actually super excited. By the way, purple for domestic violence, pink for women's cancer. Please get on board with that, y'all. I really would like to see that.
First of all, thank you to those of you who worked hard to put this on. And thank you for all of you who have given us your kind and courteous attention here tonight. This is really about public service. I have lived a life, my entire adult life, has been in public service. First, as a prosecuting attorney, second is, next, as a judge, as a fire chief on Casper Mountain. Public service is part of my being. I think that it's very important, and, and serving on the council has been kind of always something that I've always wanted to do. I couldn't do it for many years because of the prohibition on political activity. But now I'm able to do that, and I consider it to be a great privilege. I will continue to work hard for the citizens of this community. I will continue to pursue the priorities, public safety, planning for the future, traffic planning, reasonable regulations so that they encourage growth in our community, not discourage it. Those are my priorities, those are the things that I will work for. I'll appreciate your support.
Thank you, Mr. Stedeli, for moderating. I thought you did an amazing job and ran into the best drama program this town's ever seen. I love the great state of Wyoming, and I love our beautiful city. I want my three daughters and my one son to grow up here and want to stay because of all the wonderful opportunities they have with education and jobs. I consider this to be my most important job interview of my life, because I want so badly to serve this community. If I'm fortunate enough to get that opportunity, I promise to make sound, principled decisions based on conservative values. I promise to put you first and work hard for Casper, so that it can be the best it can be. The theme of my campaign is a quote from Martin Luther King Jr. "Use me, God, show me how to take who I am, who I want to be, and what I can do, and use it for a purpose greater than myself." Thank you so much.
I want to thank the voters for trusting me to represent them over the last four years in this seat, and I humbly ask again for your vote. And let me work for you, to continue to work for you over the next four years. Liberty and fiscal responsibility have been my watchword. And I will continue to fight to make sure that your money is spent properly, your assets are taken care of, and that the beast that is government is kept on a short leash. If we want to end with quotes, this is my favorite right here. You ready for this? I can't remember who said he was a French philosopher, and he says, "The welfare of society in particular is the alibi of the tyrant." Just keep that in mind.
I don't have any quotes to give you. But thank you for allowing us to be here and answer your questions tonight. You know, of all the time that I spent in public service itself when I left, I said I'm never going to go back. I enjoyed my time, but I figured I was moving on to, to do happier things. And, but you know, if you want to make a change, you got to step up and be a part of the change. You can't stand back and, and be part of the problem. Because if you're sitting on the sidelines, then you're not doing your part. One thing, I, you know, I look back at all these questions that we answered here tonight, and there's a lot of tough questions here, and a lot of it seems kind of negative. You know, we got to cut, cut here, cut there, make a decision. And there's a lot of negativity to this job. But I also want everybody to remember all the positive things that have come out of council in these last few years. And as we talk about David Street Station and the revitalization of downtown... of downtown, those are awesome things that have happened. And you talk about community, go down there at any given time, and you can see true community taking place. So I look forward to being a part of the positive things, too, that, that this council does.
Thank you. I never took any of your classes, but I did take classes with your wife, and she was rad. So thank you for moderating. Thank you for being here. Thank you to the library for putting this on, and the Women, League of Women Voters. I'm tired. I'm sick. Media being what it is right now, and everyone's focused on all the turmoil nationally, but I think there was a saying, if you guys want to quote, "You want to change the world, look in your own backyard." And I think the city needs more citizen involvement. And as far as being here tonight, I, you know, Mr. Huber was appointed to this position. I'm here tonight because constituents asked me to be here. And win or lose, I have really enjoyed walking around and getting to know my neighbors and having conversations with them. So thank you for the opportunity to be here, and I'm excited to see what, what transpires and who the citizens choose to be their voice. Thanks.
We started with you.
You did start with me.
Very good. Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in showing tremendous appreciation. Thank you. I did not bring a pen.